Well, he's very smart. He, um...
I'm not gonna trust you on this one.
Yeah, I guess he can do it. I mean, I've not moved my body, which I don't know where it came from.
Okay, sure. All right, Greg.
Call the meeting to order. Go call. Mayor Corbin.
Here.
Alderman Matthews.
Here.
On Silver.
Here.
On Spicer.
Here.
On Wall.
Here.
Okay, we need to adopt the agenda of our motion.
Motion to adopt.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Or a motion carries new business? Review the audit, annual audit financial reports for fiscal year ending 2023.
All right, we'll invite like Kraft take care of that with him.
Yeah.
Jared is here. Hello, everybody. Um, thank you for allowing me to be here. Uh, I'm Jared King. I'm an audit partner of Kraft EDA's. Uh, normally I have Jessica Scheer here with me. Uh, she's my really good detailed person. Um, her and Jason have been working together for years and, and, um, it was unfortunate neither one are able to be here tonight, but if there's any real specific questions, um, that are too in the weeds people who know the answers to, you know, just drop those down and get back to you. Um, but what I want to do is, uh, kind of go through the results of the audit. Uh, hopefully you all have a copy of draft of the audit in front of you. I'll kind of go through, uh, real high level summarized detail, um, this very big report, uh, and I'll try and make it brief, um, so that we're respectful at times. But I did want to kind of start out and, um, and say that, you know, the audits, I think, went really well this year. We were delayed a month. That's why we're here this month and so, uh, in December. Um, but as we kind of met with and discussed with Jerry and Jason, the whole finance team, um, some of the factors with system changes and turnover and, and stuff like that, just kind of made it difficult to get everything done, um, in our timeline to get the audit done by December 31st. So I appreciate also your understanding for the extension. But I will, I will point out, like I said, it was very clean. I printed out our audit adjustments, which is one page, which I don't think it's been one page in a long time. Um, and we just kind of had our, our regular audit adjustments we do every year for the pension liability, for the liability, um, and then kind of one other really minor, uh, capital outlay, which Jason kind of held until we started the audit intentionally. So really no, like audit adjustments where we, where we're finding errors correcting. I want to point that out as that's a huge accomplishment, um, for the city, for Jason and his team. Um, along those lines, if you want to take, um, your report, we start out with Roman numeral pages, just to keep you on your toes. So if you flip to Roman numeral page seven, um, that is a certificate. I want to point this out, this is something that, um, Jason and his team have been working towards for years to get this. This is the first time where we've been able to present this certificate in the report. I'm really sad he's not here, uh, for that.
I know, he was ill, he just didn't make it.
Yeah, he, um, he really has worked really hard with his team to, um, to give this certificate and achievements, um, from the GFOA, and so I want to make sure and point that out. Um, it should give you guys some comfort that the finances of the city are being run very well. So, um, I'm pulling out that certificate, that's new this year. And then I want to flip you over a few more pages to page one. Uh, that is the independent auditor's report. Kind of start there. Uh, this says, uh, in the beginning, this is our opinion, and we say in the second paragraph that the company financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of governments. Um, that is a clean opinion, that's what you want. There's some modifications. So again, I want to point out, um, our audit report showing no errors, no findings, um, on the financial statements. So again, kudos to Jason and his team for another, another year of another clean audit report. Um, if we continue flipping, um, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, I'm on page five, this is management discussion and analysis. This is a seven-page executive summary, uh, which doesn't feel like a summary, but, you know, the other hundred and thirty pages, you know, condensed down to this seven, so it's pretty good. But this is a great place, um, for, for you as aldermen, um, to kind of look at the financial highlights for the last year of the city. Um, it also has some comparative information, which is helpful, so you can see prior year, current year, um, and season trends. Um, so it's very helpful, um, kind of really high-level summary, uh, that you can look through. Again, I'm not going to spend any time on that. I'm going to kind of spend a little bit of time on the statements, and that's where we'll kind of get it all, the numbers itself. So, um, if you want to flip to page twelve, this is the statement of net position. This is government-wide. This encompasses all governmental activities, the business-type activities. Um, basically, this is the balance sheet for the entire city. Some changes from last year, this doesn't have the comparative information, that's kind of the benefit, that discussion and analysis that I talked about on page five. This is a single year, but, um, some changes and highlights year over year, um, are that cash went up about fifteen million dollars. There's another receivable for two million, if you line it down, that's actually receivables from the state revolving fund is what that is. Uh, so that, that didn't exist last year. Um, and then your capital assets went up about fifteen million dollars. So on your asset side, you have a lot of increases. Um, of course, what you'll see down the liability side is that that's offset by an increase in your debt by, let me try to get it right, about eleven, I'm sorry, about twelve million dollars. So, um, a lot of that, it just kind of shows you, you got to invest a lot, your capital assets financed by debt, of course. Some other kind of big changes on your balance sheet, um, are that your pension liability did go up almost two million dollars. Um, there, we have a footnote that kind of goes through a lot of the details of the pension liability. Um, but that was, on, on that liability is the, this is kind of a unusual situation where pensions are usually measured the year before. So this measurement date was mid-2022. So if you think about the markets in 2022, everything was kind of trending down, and this snapshot is right in the middle of 2022 and everything was kind of down. So we're anticipating that that will kind of go back up for next year when we're looking at 2023, mid-2023 market returns. So we're hoping that's a temporary increase in the liability, um, year over year. Uh, another, uh, another thing to point out, just is the total net position. Um, it did go up about eleven million dollars from last year, and nine million of that isn't unrestricted. So that's a key, um, key number for you guys to see that eighteen million dollars in unrestricted , um, net assets. I want to point that out. If you flip to the next page, this is the statement of activities. Um, basically, an income statement, again, this is government-wide. Um, pretty, pretty steady, uh, for most of these numbers from prior year. Um, your wastewater departments, uh, did go down a little bit, about one and a half million dollars. Um, and then we have this other revenue line towards the bottom of the page, it's three point six, three point six eight million. That number there, uh, there's a lot of, um, different things that go into that. There was some payments from developers, there were wastewater capacity fees that went up, there were some insurance recoveries, and that's kind of an, an animation of a few different things that, none of them individually were significant enough to break out, but we ended up with kind of a large other item. Um, so I wanted to point out that item there. And then, um, just kind of big picture, your revenues were up, were up about six million year last year. So that's a, that also contributed to that increase in the, um, net position, we talked about from the previous page. So it's a generally kind of all good news. Continuing on, uh, if you flip, turn back sideways to page fourteen, this is the balance sheet for the governmental, governmental funds, and this presentation here is a fund presentation. So this doesn't include your capital assets, your debt, your pension, your OPEV. Um, this is just the governmental funds, um, balance sheets. If you flip to the next page, what this reconciliation does is this reconciles page fourteen's governmental funds balance sheet to, um, the balance sheet or the statement of net position on page twelve. Um, this is a governmental presentation to kind of bridge you from the fund level information that's probably similar to what you guys see on a monthly basis, uh, to a generally accepted accounting principles presentation on page twelve. And, and you can see those adjustments in that the big numbers that you see are, are things having to do with recording the debt, capital assets, et cetera, on that reconciliation. Page sixteen is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for your governmental funds, so kind of similar to what we just talked about. This is before you record depreciation, um, your debt on this page are recorded, new debt is shown as revenues and debt payments are shown as expenditures. So again, this is kind of a funds level presentation. And then if you flip over to page six, sorry, to page seventeen, this again, this reconciles you from page sixteen, what we just talked about, back to page thirteen, that previous governmental line, it's in the status. So again, we've got some reconciliations, um, there are some different items here, but but generally speaking, we're kind of just converting from government fund level to GAAP accounting principles level presentation. Page eighteen is your general funds budget actual comparison. Um, I'm not really going to point out anything specific here, this is just a good general fund, this is a good place for you to look at, uh, because this is your general fund. So, um, page nineteen, continuing on, this gets into your proprietary funds or your business-type activities. Again, these are all kind of included, um, the statement of net position for these funds on page nineteen, these are included as the business-type activities on page twelve. And then similarly, on page twenty, that's your revenues and expenses for your proprietary funds. Those are included on page thirteen, it's your business-type activities on that government-wide income statement. So we're kind of taking, we're, we started from the big picture, we're starting to break down into smaller pieces, and, and that'll continue through, um, a lot of the schedules. Continuing on page twenty-one and twenty-two, this is the statement of cash flows for the proprietary funds. Um, you're, are required to show cash flow statement for your, um, government funds, so that's why there's not one there. Uh, but this can just kind of walks you through the, all the ins and outs of, of those cash flows for these funds this year. Any questions so far? Gone really fast, um, really high level. Any, any questions yet? Okay. So, starting on page twenty-three, we get into our footnotes. Um, I'm not going to go through these page by page like I did with the statements, um, y'all obviously sleep quickly, uh, if I did. Um, but starting out here on page twenty-three, um, this first note one goes on for several pages. This is, um, just like it says, it's summaries of individual accounting policies. So these next few pages really should tell you how the city actually records all their transactions, all the different types, whether it's a debt issuance or capital asset, whatever it is. Um, this kind of walks you through those accounting policies. There's no new significant accounting policies this year, so it'll kind of keep flipping. Back to page thirty-five, this is note four, capital assets. Um, page thirty-five specifically is your governmental activities. Um, this is really good, uh, the, the next few footnotes I'm going to tell you about are really good summaries. What they do is they roll forward from July first, 2022, to year end at six-thirty, 2023, and it shows you all the ins and outs. This is for your capital assets, for governmental activities. Um, you can see here in the additions column, um, it's not actually totaled between construction process and assets being depreciated, but you had about six point two million here in additions, mainly in construction and process. Similarly, if you flip over to page thirty-six, this is your, uh, same capital asset roll forward for business-type activities. And here, again, you can see you have about thirteen million in additions, um, primarily, again, in construction and process. And then there at the bottom of the page, we have a very summarized paragraph here, but uh, the total remaining commitments on these capital assets is about thirty-six million dollars. We have further details, uh, breaking those out by specific commitments in note, means your reference to note ten. Um, and so that, if you want kind of more detailed information on what those commitments are and to whom, um, I would refer back to note ten. Note five, this is the other kind of really nice roll forward, um, footnote, it's just on the next page, on page thirty-seven. So again, uh, this is your governmental activities on your roll forward. You can see you have a new debt of three point one, three point two million, um, that is funding those, uh, capital assets. And then also you can flip to the next page, on page thirty-eight, and you see your business type activity, you can see that's ten point nine, um, million in additional debt this year. Um, I'll give you, I'll point out some more key schedules for debt, uh, as we flip through. Um, if, kind of continue on in note five, we go through each specific debt issuance and give some of the terms, balances by debt issuance, so you can see what those are and what those terms are. And then back on page forty-two, we have a schedule for maturities. Um, this is another key schedule, I think, for you guys to kind of, um, look at, key in on, again, it's split out between the top table is governmental, bottom table is business-type, but it just walks through kind of year by year what the city is required to pay back on debt. So, uh, good, important, um, summary to look at. There's a more detailed version in the back. Uh, page forty-three, note seven, that's your pension plan disclosure. Um, the city has a pension plan that's administered by the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System, or TTRS. Um, this footnote, which is several pages long, uh, walks through all of the, the terms of the plan, walks through the actuarial assumptions. Again, that's a, based on a 2022 measurement date. Um, and it ha, also have on page forty-seven, it has a roll forward of that pension liability. So you can see, um, last year, the pension liability was three hundred and eighty-four thousand, this year it's two point one million. Again, a lot of that's just driven by markets, so no, no significant changes in the plan of the structure. Similarly, note eight, that's your OPEV, uh, post, other post-employment, um, plan information. This is the healthcare plan, medical and dental benefits. Um, this has, it's got a very similar to the pension footnote where it walks through all the actuarial assumptions. Um, it kind of has a roll forward of this pin, OPEV liability. Um, not much change there on page fifty-one, um, actually a slight decrease in that liability, which is good news. Uh, page fifty-four, that's note ten, just like commitments I was referring to earlier. Um, it just walks through, um, each paragraph is kind of a separate little commitment, you can kind of read, read out all of those, that's a, that's a good place, um, to stop and spend some time on. That is through the footnotes. Any questions? Uh, there are no kind of new significant footnotes this year, nothing exciting to point out. Um, any questions so far? No? All right. Um, next, we have required supplementary information, um, not really have too many time on these. There, it's, there's some pension and OPEV schedules. Uh, there's also, um, we do want to point out the last page, we start to get into some more of the funds budget actual schedules. Uh, this one on page sixty is the debt service fund. And then continuing on to page sixty-one, you see your header, you've got combining an individual fund, statements and schedules. Um, this next section, and I, I won't go through these unless anybody wants to stop on a specific fund, um, to talk about it in particular, um, really what this does, it takes all the major funds, non-major funds, excuse me, and it kind of combines them up into some of the numbers that you're seeing in those front statements. So this is just kind of consolidating and combining information, um, for some of those non-major funds. It also then gets into, it starts on page sixty-six, that's when you get into some of the individual funds budget actual schedules. So again, um, any specific funds that, that you guys are interested in, um, this is another good place to go to kind of look at, um, to kind of see how those funds are doing. Kind of, we start with industrial development fund and we continue on all the way to the proprietary funds on page seventy-four. So those are all just individual non-major funds, um, schedules, shows the revenues, expenditures, and budget for everything. Um, the next section is called other schedules, because we're running out of different words for all these different schedules. So we'll kind of start out, there's, um, revenue and expenses, um, there's some different schedules in there, scheduled property taxes receivable. Um, but I wanted to draw your attention to page eighty. That is the schedule of changes in long-term debt that individuals issue. So there's a couple of debt schedules here, kind of further breakout of that footnote that we talked about, you know, five. So page eighty, like I said, that's the, uh, scheduled changes, kind of like the roll forward we saw earlier in the footnotes, those changes. And then continuing on to page eighty-one, uh, is just the schedule, this is the non, kind of summarized maturity schedule. So this is really specific, year by year by year through twenty forty-three, what the, what the city wants to pay back on those same.
Page eighty, eighty-two is also a year.
Yeah.
I look at those all the time, and I really appreciate that you set that up for us.
Yeah, the, the, page eighty-one, um, it's governmental activities, we've got to split everything out, um, that's required. Uh, and then page eighty-two is business-type activities. So that's your wastewater, all the waste, et cetera, those ones. So, and again, I go through twenty forty-three for your last, last round of payments right now. Page eighty-three, that's your schedule of expenditures on federal and state awards. Um, I'll point out that the receipts column, uh, or, excuse me, the expenditures column, uh, one point six million. Uh, anything more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars triggers the requirement from the federal government to have, uh, sometimes called a single audit, sometimes called a uniform guidance audit. Um, and so we did have to do a single audit this year on the city. It's basically a compliance audit. We've been doing it for a few years, uh, with the city, and we'll get into those results in the back. Um, the, there's a statistical section that starts on page eighty-seven. This section here, this is a new section that just kind of came with to the financials last year. Uh, this is the section that requires to get that certificate that's in the front, that GFOA certificate, but we don't audit anything in here. We really are, Jason and his team compile it, we really are just kind of re-compiling it, presenting it for you guys. It's, it's got a lot of great information. It, generally the schedules have ten years of information, and so of all kinds of topics, some of them are non-financials. Uh, but this is a great place to go if you want to see some of those long-term trends of year-over-year, whether you're, you're interested in what's the change in the net position, basically the net income loss to the city for the year, to, um, debt information, property values, all kinds of stuff. Um, there's a treasure trove of information. I will say, page eighty-seven, I'm sure you guys saw it, there's a, it kind of breaks down, these are the different categories, there's financial trends, debt capacity, civic graphic information, et cetera. Uh, that table of contents on page eighty-seven will kind of help you find what information this is looking for. Now, that goes, that section goes all the way back through one ten. So if you flip to page one-eleven, this is another auditor's report. This, there's two reports here. These reports are reports that are required to, um, present to you when we do one of those single audits. So the first report here is the report on internal controls over financial reporting. Um, I do want to point out, at the very bottom of page one-eleven, we do, we do note that we did discover a deficiency in internal control, and we gave it a finding number, but we did consider that to be a significant deficiency. Um, there's a lot, there's some information very back, they, as to what exactly went on, we can spend a few minutes there, but, um, I do want to point out, we did have that finding this year, uh, with our internal controls. On page one-thirteen, that's our report on compliance for each major program. Um, and it kind of, the second paragraph here, we say, you know, why I was complying in all material respect of the compliance requirements, um, for the major program. And so this is again, no findings here on the compliance reports, it's in the opinion. So this is what you want with that report. If you flip back, the finding I noted, the, uh, significant deficiency, um, flip back to page one-seventeen. This is going to tell you exactly what happened. Well, I won't make, I mean, it, there's a, it summarizes a little bit, uh, but this kind of walks through, uh, the specific things we ran into this year, um, what management's responses, and so kind of to spend a few minutes here, um, I do want to go through, we had three specific findings. Everything was, um, check-related, so dispersion-related, and, and you guys may be aware, I apologize if I'm regurgitating things you're aware of, but, um, we had a few instances where there were voided checks that were left out. Um, normally, that's not a big deal, but with the other findings, it kind of elevates it a little bit, I think is a little more concerning, um, that there were some checks that just kind of had the check number, routing number, um, have a lot of information on that that you may not want a random passerby kind of being able to see. Along those lines, our, our second bullet point here, we have, we did have some fraudulent checks that were written and cashed, um, but they, they totaled approximately thirteen thousand dollars. That's not, from our standpoint, what we're looking at for the audit, that's not a significant number. The, the breakdown in controls is what's significant to, to us, maybe not the dollars in this, in this standpoint.
So there's no recommendation, though, that when an address is changed by a vendor, to actually call the client and make sure that the vendor, and make sure that they're actually requesting the address change?
We, we have it, we kind of have this, um, it's, it's on the next page, there's a, there's a recommendation similar, I think it kind of gets to that, where, uh, we're recommending verifying information to a W-9. And so I would hope if they, if you have a vendor that's changing addresses, that they're sending you updated W-9s. Uh, but your point, that, you know, you should make sure, yeah. We're getting.
I mean, we asked for one and they signed it, but we didn't verify it with our actual client by picking up the phone and saying, hey, did you do this? I'm in banking, so that's kind of, okay.
Yeah, no, I totally understand. Um, this, this, this third finding, going back to page one-seventeen, we did have an instance where a check went out the door, I think the bank, saw something a little unusual about it, maybe it was just a dollar, but it's about one point three million, um, and called the city verified. And then as, as a result, the check was not cashed, um, which was a, a huge catch by the bank. So, since you're in banks, you kind of understand the, the recommendations, even the big recommendation we have, this is the second, at the bottom paragraph on page one-seventeen. Uh, we, we recommend it'd be a great idea to kind of get with a bank that uses positive pay. What positive pay is, basically lets you, if you, you have a, you have a list of checks, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but you kind of have a list of checks and the bank knows what to expect, and if they see a check that's not on this list, they're going to reach out to the city and be like, hey, I've got an extra check, this is legit.
Yeah, they also have, the city employees involved in online banking, actually, has been a liberty to approve or deny the check within their online banking as well, based on the user. So we've already rectified that.
Yeah, and then actually, all three of these recommendations, so the first one was just kind of keeping checks, whether they're voided or not, like they need to be in the lock department. Um, that's already been done, is already.
Yeah, we take, we took care of that, the gentleman had some other accounting issues that we had, we had to terminate, because the current, currently, his, his employment, uh, that was part of it, and you go on.
Yeah, yeah, the next recommendation, positive pay, um, you know, we, we know that, that you've already started working with Regions Bank, who does have that positive pay system. And so hopefully, hopefully with these checks going out now, it should prevent, um, these, these fraudulent checks getting out the door.
And the W-9, we, we definitely resolved that, too. That was, we're purchasing a clerk, who's, uh, of an email that came in, and asked to change the address.
Yeah.
And that's what happened there. Unfortunately, we said, you know, the bank had called that, where they took the bank to go pay the tax, contacted, which we didn't.
So all of these recommendations are written, present tense, but really the city has already implemented all three recommendations. And so we feel, we feel going forwards, you know, all of these controls, the control issue we found around dispersment happened for accident, and we don't have any such deal of concerns. So I would expect that significant deficiency to drop off the radar next year, this year. So I do, I do want to point that out, we did have that one. So I do, I do want to point that out, we did have that one significant deficiency we ran into, but it should be a one-time, one-time item. Again, that was intentionally brief, I wanted to leave time for questions. Anything you may have read in here ahead that's exciting about, or have questions about? Obviously, we are reachable anytime, you can, you can get to me or Jessica or, or anybody perhaps through Giaria or Jason. We can get connected, if you think of a question later, or read through something, and find something to use about.
That one piece of paper you had, is it in here?
No, it's not. We, we will issue, and it will go, it will go to board, a, call it post-audit letter that will summarize the audit adjustments in there. It won't be real detailed with every GL account, but it'll summarize by kind of balance sheet and income statement line. But we'll get that to you.
If you don't want, we'll have you final for any of the questions.
Well, I need to get with Jason to kind of figure out, figure out what's left for us after this is we will, we'll talk to Jason, see if there's any subsequent events that have happened that we need to consider for recognition or disclosure. We have a management representation letter that we have Jason sign and send back to us. So I have to figure out when Jason's going to be back. But as soon as he's back, we should be able to finalize. And then we'll get a final copy and that letter to the board, we'll have the adjustments.
Do you find this eligible to apply for the certificate this year?
Yeah, we, we did, and Jason did too, did some research that even with the significant deficiency, we believe that the city will still be eligible for a certificate from the GFOA for the 2023 year. You know, we'll, we'll, we'll see. But hopefully, hopefully that won't preclude the city from getting that certificate. Oh, Jason was very excited to get that.
I have a question, it's for Gerald and you also. Regarding depreciating out the new wastewater treatment plant, once it's completed and we start full depreciation out on schedule, and then in addition to picking up the additional debt payments that are going to be pulled down, have we looked at that and see how that's going to impact our, if it may impact our wastewater rates with that enterprise fund? Is that something?
I, I don't, no, might not, no, we will, they will have no reason for us to increase fees for wastewater as a result of that extra on debt. I've asked the crew not to take on any more debt from, until 2035. Most of their debt, you see they're going to have a whole bunch of ULS, or it was all like 1% loans, and some of them are small amounts. I was going to start paying, and we did pay one off early, then we started looking at it, we thought, well, with rates going up, that's low cash, I mean, let's cash everything we can, and that's what we're doing now, we're cashing what we can. I don't see us going any more significant than what we've been doing for several years now at 3%, that probably would be relating towards that being my recommendation again, but that should be it, not the other debt, for sure.
So my understanding is that depreciation isn't currently an expense, and we have to count that, even though it's, it's not there actually, we just have to accrue for that. So, and depreciating now, is it 40 years or 30 years?
39.
39, okay.
Forty, yeah, that always bothers, I always, Joe Moss, he always complains about that, or former public service director.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, the amount like depreciation.
It is, it's a long-term depreciation. I would say for, for your terms, it might be more flipping, kind of be looking at, what's the, do we expect that useful life on that? Do you plan to be 39 years, or if we think, based on capacity, whatever, whatever else it could be, should we be looking at 20 or something like that? You know, that, that could trigger, that could trigger something, but, you know. I, I know, I know kind of perspective, looking forward to information like that, we don't generally get a lot into that a lot. It comes up a lot of discussion with.
It's definitely true, our revenues are exceeding our expenditures each year. If you have two years in a row where we're, where we're not, you know, the state puts us aside, could put us on notice and make me take control of your records. And so we don't want that to happen, it hasn't happened, and we've not given them any reason for it. Our, our plan that we, we put in place, that's right, nine years ago, 10 years ago, where we're going with 3% each, each year. Sometimes it does build up to your fund balance, but it keeps you on it, it keeps you in shape, where your revenues are always exceeding expenditures. And that's been successful with that so far, so.
Thank you.
You have any questions? You good? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Gerald, I did appreciate the opportunity to speak to you guys and let me know if you have any questions.
You know, in the business, we are during.
So we can buy some snowplows now, Eric, looks like they're clocking us.
I know, I know.
I want, I want to do the big apartment.
Hey, we gotta get a swimming pool first. Yeah, then we get some more snowplows.